Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing everyone to be here this evening to conduct the business of the town. We just ask you to lead the leaders of the town, the elected leaders and the citizens and the staff, as we do the business of the town to the best of our ability. And we just pray for traveling mercies for everyone leaving here this evening. In your name we pray. Amen.
Let's pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We need an approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any additions or things they want to change? Councilman McGowan made the motion to approve it. Councilman Dobbin made the motion that seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed? The next item is the approval of the minutes of the May 16 meeting. Are there any corrections or additions? Randy Jernigan made the motion to approve the minutes of May 16, 2022, and David McGowan seconded. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed? Did you send me the information for them? Okay.
Go ahead with the first two public hearings.
Okay, okay. She was supposed to send me some information, so I want to make sure she wanted me to go forward. Okay. We have a, I'm going to open a public hearing at 6:34 to consider the amendment of the town ordinance of the town of Wilson Mills. Anyone wishing to speak, come forward. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Sign in, state your name, address. No one coming forward will close the public hearing at 6:35. What is council's wishes on this ordinance? Councilman McGowan made the motion to approve the ordinances to amend the town of Wilson Mills ordinances. Councilman Trippett seconded. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. We have a public hearing called at 6:36 to consider the amendment to the town of Wilson Mills Unified Development Ordinances. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Limit your comments to three minutes. Sign in, state your name and your address. Close the public hearing at 6:37. What's the council's wishes?
Make a motion, we approve the changes to the UDO as presented.
Councilman Jernigan made the motion to approve the Unified Development Ordinance Changes. Councilman McGowan seconded. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed? Okay, now we have the God give me just a minute. We have a public hearing to consider the ordinance for the physical, for the budget for the fiscal year 2022, 2023. There are two amendments that have to be added to this. One is the
SCIF.
SCIF funds, which is $2,006,0562. And the other one is the OPRF funds, which is $878,987. And these are added to this budget. I'm opening the public hearing at 6:38. Anyone wishing to comment on the budget, please come forward. Keep your comments to three minutes. State your name, your address, and sign in.
Mayor, just for clarification on those, the SCIF funds are the amounts that were received from the state, the $2 million that was received from the state budget, plus the interest expected for this year. And then the OPRF funds were the funds that we will be receiving. Two payments, we've already received, one in the amount of $439,166, plus the other $439 that we'll receive this year in interest earned. So that's where those totals come from. They're in two different funds, just like the sewer funds are. We just were left off of that.
They were, yeah, they were left off the budget, so we wanted to be sure that what they were included, so that everyone would know they were there. Okay.
Jim Ozil, I reside at 138 Ozil Industrial Drive. My question is, the $2 million that is in the first part of that, does that not have to be applied to infrastructure?
It's for the town hall. For the town hall.
Oh, well.
It's designated for the town hall.
It was not tied to infrastructure.
No, no, no. It is designated for a town hall for Wilson Mills.
Okay.
Closing the public hearing at 6:40. What is the pleasure of the council?
You turn your mic on.
And before, before we proceed, I'm not, I'm not seeing that anywhere. And I asked David on the $2 million and the other.
That's why it's not in here. That's why we say it's being added. It was left off this budget.
Oh, okay.
So it's not in here, so we're adding it by word. Yeah, it's, it was left, unintentionally left off this budget pages. So we're adding it so that it can be in the form. Okay.
Make a motion that we approve the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, and ending June 30th, 2023, the budget with said amendments.
Councilman Jernigan made the motion to accept the budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023, and Councilman Trippett seconded that. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed? Okay. At this time, we will open the first open forum. Anybody want to speak, please come forward. Limit your comments to three minutes. State your name, your address, and sign in.
Good evening, members of the council, staff, and visitors, or guests. My name is Philip Wright. I live 725 Powertown Road, Lake North Carolina. I have a concern about last May 16 council meeting. Our town maintenance supervisor came forward and stating that he had got bids on three different lawnmowers. And at that time, he never gave the price of any bids as what they were, as if the public wasn't supposed to know. And when asked what he preferred, he stated John Deere. Almost simultaneously, the motion was made to purchase a John Deere. Just, just as if it had already been approved before council meeting. And someone during the comment, made the comments, we already had John Deere equipment. We have at town hall, but if you ain't gonna put the John Deere mower behind that bushyard behind that mower, you know, put a box plate behind it, you know, put the bucket on the front of it, or it won't work. That's the reason we have the truck. And I just feel like it was should have been divorced what the prices were, so far as the bids and the John Deere lawnmower itself. It was just as if it were not, that the public was not supposed to be allowed to know. I've got another concern. I've written down a small piece of paper. A town hall. It says, y'all just stated we've got $2,006,000 for to build a town hall. To my knowledge, there's nothing been done about purchasing land or building a town hall, getting it lined up to build. Couple years, three or four years ago, this came up, wanting to move across Seven Highway. Citizens that were born and raised here, both were disapproval of that, and this subject was dropped. It's come up again, moving across town, across Seven Highway. And there is, there's citizens born and raised here still do not approve of that measure going across town hall going across Seven Highway with town hall. Wilson Mills is on this side of Seven Highway. And some, some want to buy 10, 15 acres across Seven Highway, put a maintenance building, put a town hall, police department, fire department, everything in one kilometer, one congested area. I do not feel that that is proper, that it needs to be that way. We need to have town hall at a separate place. It does not need to be piled up in with the fire department and so forth. We have one piece of property has been off of sale, the Wilson property out here. It's not brought through. To me, would make a beautiful town hall area. Be able to back a lot up, put a beautiful town hall back there, build gardens and so forth out front, drive, parking lot, and so on. I know a lot of people disagree with that idea, but to me, it's the perfect place for town hall. Be right there at the major intersection of Swift Creek and Wilson Mills Road. It'd be convenient for most anybody. And one other concern, maintenance building, which we desperately need. We've got equipment setting out, resting, and so forth. And to my understanding, we've got the money to build a maintenance building. My thoughts are that we need to hire engineering concern, architecture concern, or business, allow them to take the projects home, design a new town, and design a maintenance building, come up with a cost on it, whichever cheapest, wood or steel. I know steel and both of them, oh, both of them are high price. But I do know that there's a lot of wood being built now versus steel. And I'm gonna say that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The fact that the amounts were left off for the bids last month was probably my fault. We went with the lowest bid, which was the John Deere, which was the one the maintenance man wanted. But we will try to correct that in the future. There is some work being done to buy land for a town hall. It's not made public because we don't know where we're going to put it yet, but we are looking at land. It's not something that we have forgotten. The maintenance building will be built when we can afford it. There's a lot of things going on that is not made known to the public because we can't. There's a lot of talk going on in different areas, and we're trying to cover all this stuff. And as soon as we can let you know, we'll be glad to share it with you. Any more comments? Close the open forum at 6:49. The Southeast Area Study Update. I think we have a gentleman out here that's going to give us an update. How are you doing tonight?
Good. How are y'all?
Good.
Good. Thank you, Mayor. My name's Brandon Watson. I'm with the North Carolina Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. And I wanted to, we're doing an area study in this area that stretches from Garner and Wake County all the way down to Pine Mills. So I wanted to give a, a quick update on that. I'm going to try to be as quick as possible. If you all have any questions as I go through these slides, I'm just going to say next page when I go to the next one. But if you have any questions, just stop me and ask, and I'll take questions at the end too, because I really want your feedback on any transportation issues or anything that you guys notice around town that we can start to look at. So, uh, next page. So I'm going to quickly go through the project background, who all is involved with this project, our schedule and outreach strategy, and then, you know, what's, what's next, what you all can expect next. Next, next page, please. So just as a quick background, Campo conducts area studies like this to try to kind of zoom in on a smaller area as opposed to our whole entire Campo boundary, which stretches from Cary all the way up to Franklinton, down to Fuquay Arena. So this is just looking at the southeast area. And we try to have a lot more robust public engagement. We look at specific network issues, specifically the transportation network. And then recommendations from this are going to flow into our 2055 Metropolitan Transportation Plan. We just finished our 2051. Next page, please. So what is the Southeast Area Study Update? This is actually an update to the 2017 Southeast Area Study that Campo conducted. It looks at land use and multimodal transportation needs of the study area. So we're going to have recommendations across all modes. We'll have roadway, bicycle, pedestrian, and transit recommendations. We're going to take a close examination and update of land use and socioeconomic data. So, you know, we can't conduct a transportation study without looking at land use too. So we have a program that will model out what the land use will look like. And that takes your future land use plan, as well as all of the other future land use plans into account. So where's all the gross growth going to go? And it kind of distributes it. Then we take the transportation model to see what it does to the transportation, transportation network. Do we need to widen this road, or do we need to widen a parallel road? Where's the growth going to go? And then also, it gives us a chance to do much more extensive public engagement as opposed to the huge region as a whole. Next slide, or next page, please. So these were our guiding principles from 2017. I'm not going to read all of these, but I'll just point out like what they are. We, the guiding principles that kind of led this study last time include travel safety, active transportation, freight movement, livability, network connectivity, economic vitality, sustainable growth, and traffic flow. And then it kind of describes each in there. So this first phase of public engagement that I'm going to talk about is going to kind of get a pulse. Are these still the guiding principles we need to be looking at? Or do we need to change some things considering the, all the growth that's happening? All right, next page. As far as the study area, we did expand the study area this time. You can see on the left that, that was our original study area from 2017. We expanded to the west a bit to include a little bit more of Raleigh and a little bit west of Garner. And if you see down there to the southeast, we went one census block group to the southeast past I-95. So we now include Pine Level, actually said Pine Mills earlier, I'm sorry. We now include Pine Level. We didn't include that in the first study, so we're excited to welcome them to the study this time. And just a side note on that, with the recent census, every metropolitan planning organization or rural planning organization kind of has to take a look at their boundaries. So we'll be taking a look at the boundary and seeing if the growth that's happened in the Smithville, Selma, Wilsons Mills area is enough that the NPO needs to spread down to that area. So we are looking at that right now, and that's another reason why we're doing this study, because if we are going to include all of that, we want to make sure we have the transportation network up to date. Next page, please. And so the, as far as the partnership, next page. We have Campo, the Capital Area NPO. We've got NC DOT as a partner as well. And then the Upper Coastal Plain Rural Planning Organization, which is the RPO, which is what you guys are under right now. Next page, please. And then as far as who else is involved, we've got Garner, that's in Wake County. So Garner and Wake County are involved in the study and all of their, not all of Wake County, but all of Garner's town limits. And then we have Archer Lodge, Benson, Clayton, Four Oaks, Johnston County as a, as a, or the northwest portion of Johnston County, Kenley, Micro, Pine Level, Selma, Smithfield, and Wilsons Mills. And there's a little bit of southeast Raleigh included as well, so we did include them in our study. Next page, please. So we do have a consultant working on this. Kim Lee Horn was selected as a lead consultant. And they have also Planning and Design and Clarion Associates and Four Square working on this. And as a part of this study, we have created a stakeholder oversight team that's going to include decision makers. So we have elected officials, community leaders, and they're going to provide us oversight direction and feedback and decision making on where the study is going to go. We had it in the right direction. And they'll meet like four times. And we actually had our first meeting of that on May 19th, and we had over 75 people attending virtually. We did it virtually. Anticipate the next one will be in person, so it'll probably be in the Johnston County area. And then we also have, next page, the core technical team. And we've partnered with all the communities within this area. And that's going to be another committee made of local planning, engineering, municipal staff. So we're really just looking for local expertise. They're going to focus on the key deliverables and kind of really get down in the weeds of everything that we're doing. They'll meet about 10 times during the study, and that first meeting was a meeting between both of them. Next page, please. So who else is involved? We have, we're obviously going to be reaching out to the general public. We will be having three public engagement periods. We're about to start our first one in July. I'll talk more about that in a minute. But we'll really be looking for key points that we need input from the public on. And then local jurisdiction members, we, you know, we're going to be relying on staff, and there'll be certain staff like Parks and Rec or different types of staff that will need their input at certain points during the study. And then key stakeholders from a variety of organizations, and that's including advocacy groups, major employers in the area, community groups, neighborhood organizations. So I've reached out to all of our staff and our SOT members to ask for suggestions for that. So we have about 140 people on that list right now. So if you know anyone else, we'll have that list on the website here soon. So take a look and let us know if we need to add anyone else. And then elected officials are involved with this as well. We'll be doing three rounds of board briefings like this. This is the first one. And I would kind of go through that in the schedule in a second. And then we have a consultant team made up of transportation and land use planning professionals that are experts in the field that are going to kind of guide us through this process. Next page, please. All right, about our schedule and outreach, next page. So I'm not going to read the schedule, but I wanted to kind of just give you a general idea, you know, what, what are we, what are the general outputs of this study? What are we going to be doing? So we're, we're looking at discovery and inventory of existing conditions right now, and we'll be building off the first study. We'll also be conducting some land use scenario planning, which is what I was talking about earlier. We'll have base conditions and we'll explore two alternatives. So we'll say, what if we put a lot of growth in town centers? Or what if we put a lot of growth more suburban style? And we'll see what the transportation network looks like with doing either one of those. We'll have policy updates, and we'll be using best practices. And that'll lead into exploration and assessment of current and future needs for the study area. And then we'll also be presenting some draft recommendations for all of the modes that I was talking about earlier. We'll look at performance standards and what implementations of those projects will look like. So we'll probably have a near, mid, and long-term projects. And near term would probably be, you know, NC DOT has these planned in the next 10 years. And long-term will probably be, hopefully one day we'll get this greenway, or one day we'll get this road widening or new road. But they'll all be separated in those categories. And then we'll have a review of all the recommendations, and then we'll have final documents that will be approved. And our last step will be to come to you, and we'll be asking for your endorsement on the study and the recommendations so that we can incorporate it into our long, long-range plans. And that, that's our schedule right there. So if you have any questions about that later, let us know. There's three phases of public engagement. We're in the discover phase right now. So we're going to be asking the public, you know, to look at a map, tell us where you see problems or issues. What are your, what are your interests in this area that we need to consider as we consider transportation? We'll have an involve stage where we, we will actually involve the public more on recommendations. And then the last will be the consult, where we come here and ask for endorsement. Next page. We just released the website, and that's in the next slide, but we put the public engagement plan on there. So we have a plan for a detailed engagement strategy of how we're going to do that. So take a look at that, and if you have any questions about that, let us know as well. And it also establishes our goals of, you know, what are we, who are we trying to reach? And what's, what's a good goal of public engagement? Next page. This just shows the project website, and it is seareastudieupdate.com. So it's live now. We're going to have an engagement hub on there as well. There'll be a survey for this public engagement round. There'll be a survey for this public engagement round. And we'll also have all of our public facing information, all the information and details from our stakeholder oversight team meeting as well. Next page. Our outreach toolbox, our first round of public engagement, we're going to give a toolbox to all of our municipalities. So it's going to include email and social media post templates, flyers and frequently asked questions. And then a quick kind of elevator speech pitch card of what the Southeast Area Study Update is and what we're asking people to comment on and, and take the survey and, and all of that. Next page, looking ahead. So these are the next steps, next page. Like I said before, we're in the discover phase and that's going to run until August. And then we'll have the other two phases coming up after that. So you'll be seeing someone from Campo two more times over the course of this study. That is supposed to end in June of two thousand twenty-three. Next page. Our first phase is now, we're kind of going to be asking about our guiding principles from two thousand seventeen. Are they still what we need to be looking at? We're going to identify transportation and land use needs and opportunities. So we'll be asking everyone, let us know where problems areas are, congestion issues, intersection safety issues. Where you think a greenway should be? It's, we're collecting feedback, so it's all open and we'd love to have your comments. And then last will be to just raise awareness that this study is going on because we want people to know that it's happening. Next page, please. Our, so for the phase one engagement, we're going to have some pop-up events. And I've actually been talking about possibly coming to the Wilson's Mills Farmers Market and setting up a table. So kind of events like that where we actually come to where people already are and not have a public meeting with COVID. And just, we don't get a ton of good attendance to those. So we're going to have any pop-up events you can think of, or if there's a festival or something, we'll be glad to come to that. We're going to have an online survey that's going to be open from July sixth through July twenty-ninth. And then the outreach toolbox, toolbox will be launched on the sixth and we'll have a virtual public engagement walkthrough for staff on July eleventh. Next page. And so as on the other side of things from public engagement, right now on the technical side, we're looking at existing conditions analysis. We're reviewing any adopted and ongoing plans. So we've spent a long time collecting all the plans that have happened and we're going through those now. We're establishing existing land use in the model. So we've been collecting everyone's future land use maps and kind of plugging those into GIS so that we can see what that looks like with the network. Deficiency analysis, that's just taking a look at where the, where, where do we need widens? What does a roadway network look like right now? Where, where's their congestion and where, where are their projects that we have in the long-term plan that we might not need anymore? There, there might not even need to be a widening anymore. And then we'll also have some hotspots where we identify some specific projects that we kind of do a concept design for like a new intersection or a new corridor to show what it could look like to go from two to four lanes with sidewalk. And so there'll be a few of those identified through the study. And next page, and that's, that's all I had for you today. I think. Yeah, that's, that's all I had. Do you guys have any questions or any, anywhere that you want us to be aware of that we need to go ahead and look at?
I know what she's going to say, the intersection of Wilson Mills Road and Fire Department Road. We need something done in front of JD's Country Store.
Wilson's Mills and Fire Department?
When they finish the bridges. The, the survey that's going to be on in July, how do we let the public know that they can go on and take that survey?
So we'll have all of that on the website. And they'll all be posted.
Is there some type of flyer that will be available so that we can get it? Because I know some people in town that would take the survey and would put their four cents worth in and you need that.
Yes.
So we need something to be able to give to the community to let them know that the survey is there. They need to take it and put their opinion in.
Correct. Exactly.
That starts in July, right?
Starts July sixth and we'll have the outreach toolbox that'll have all of that stuff.
And that's going to be available to.
That will be, yep, we'll send that out. And we'll also have a map that we'll be asking people to comment on and just put a point and say, there's a problem here. And the last study I did, honestly, there was, it ranged from like, like she was saying, there's a pothole here or something like really short-term as opposed to we're, we're looking long-term. But all those short-term things that people are commenting on, we're able to send that to NC DOT. You know, we're not NC DOT, but we can send that to, to people that are, are dealing with that. So please, any kind of comments are great.
That is a good question too, and that's, we'll be looking at transit and we will be looking at commuter rail through this study. We've got a study going on right now, looking at commuter rail through Garner and Clayton and down through Smithfield. So long-term, we will be looking at that through this study as well and taking comments on it. Right, yeah.
That one, that one's, the one you're talking about going from Durham to Charlotte though, would not be included in this because this is the southeast area.
Right, that, yeah, yeah.
That's a totally different.
Right.
Area. Yeah, it is. It's in the different study.
So how, how, how closely are you working, y'all, or is this organization working with North Carolina DOT?
They're actually a partner in this study, so.
Explain to me what a partner is.
So NC DOT and the RPO and Campo are all funding partners for this study. So they, they're part of the project management team. They're, they're a huge part of this study and different divisions or different people in different divisions are going to be plugged in at different points. So for example, when we look at hotspots, we're looking at a specific intersection. We'll have, we'll have the like people that look at crashes and safety to come to those meetings. And Division Five will be coming to all of our meetings that looks at long-range planning. They'll be at all of our meetings. And I think we had at least four or five people from NC DOT at that first meeting. So they're, they're very plugged in.
How, how? How much of the two thousand seventeen study is going to be included or going to be looked at when you're looking at this tonight?
We are.
Are you just going to forget that or are you going to add it in?
That's a really good question. We're definitely not going to forget that. We're, we're trying to spend our money wisely here. We have a consultant doing this. So for example, with existing conditions, they did a ton of work on that in, you know, two thousand seventeen was five years ago. A lot has changed, but also a lot of that has not changed. So they'll be, they'll be kind of taking a lot of the existing conditions that happened before and making a new and updated report. But as far as the recommendations, it's, it's all going to be looked at over again. All of the recommendations that existed previously are still there. They're in our long-range plan. They've been approved by all the boards and everything. But we'll be looking at every single one of those projects and deciding, are they still valid? Do we need more? So we're, it's, it's an update. We're very clear it's an update because we don't want to redo anything that we.
Right, because it's already there.
So on the recommendations from two thousand seventeen, can you tell me a percentage of what has been accomplished in those five years?
I cannot tell you a percentage, but that is a really good question. And I would say that when you're looking at near, mid or long-term for a study area for us, where it's, it's going to depend on NC DOT, those near-term recommendations. I know there was like three or four, sorry, three or four specific projects that we had kind of highlighted that had happened since the study. But I don't know if you all know about all the funding challenges that NC DOT has had that they've been dealing with, that we, they're, they're writing a new state transportation improvement program now. So a lot of those projects that were supposed to be completed by a certain date are still kind of hanging in the queue.
I mean, and, and the reason I ask about NC DOT and, and percentage that from two thousand seventeen is, is because if you call and, and you try to get a pothole fixed at the intersection right here in town, you can't even get that done. I mean, I, I just question and, and, I mean, I, I don't know anything about it, but seems like a whole lot of effort being put in for something that, you know, if we done a stunning in two thousand seventeen. And, and, and I agree with Jim, we've been talking about a rail service. I mean, we, the, the, the growth has not slowed down one bit. And I know we, we all have funding issues.
Right.
And the town has funding issues, we all have funding. But, you know, I, 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 I hope you do best on, on, on this and, and I hope, I hope people will get involved. But I just questioned that how legitimate it, it's going to be in long run.
Yeah, so that's totally valid. I would just highlight the fact that as far as like the feedback loop with this, a study like this and with the projects that are coming out of NC DOT. Our projects that we're recommending for near-term, we're getting those from NC DOT. Where, where anything we recommend is near-term, it's, it's not really any funding behind it. It's, the funding's already there. So we're saying those near-term recommendations, we're saying, okay, NC DOT has this in their next ten years. This is, this is going to be near-term. So we're really looking at more the long-term recommendations. And the reason that we do that is we want to have those lines on the map, especially roadway or bike bed. We want to have those there so that if developers are coming in and building, they know that they need to have the right of way. They need to hold that right of way for a bike bed. If NC DOT has a complete streets policy now, so if you have a greenway on a plan or a side path or something on a road, they'll include it in their project if it's, if it's on a plan. If it's not on a plan anywhere, then they won't include it. So we just want to make sure we gather all of that and have that on a map for them.
How about the? The greenway between the Neuse River, is that going to be included? Is that part of the?
Is that the, the Neuse River Trail feasibility study?
Is that going to be part of this?
Definitely. I'm anticipating that they should have a preferred alternative for that here in the next month or two as to.
Well, if it doesn't include Power Ten Road, you tell them they got to change it. It's got to come through Wilson Mills.
Right, right.
They don't, they don't have a choice.
Right, yeah, I'm not sure what their preferred alternative would be, but whatever that is, we will plug that in to the Southeast Area Study Update. But I will say, whatever their preferred alternative is, we're, we're also going to have alternatives to the alternatives in the Southeast Area Study Updates. So if they're saying the line's going to go here, we'll probably have, you know, this road's going to have a side path and this road will have this too. In their long-range recommendations, you know, obviously you need funding for all of that, but.
We want it to come through Wilson Mills.
I will let them know.
Please. Okay, does anybody have any questions for Brandon? Thank you. And keep us updated and just as soon as you can get that information so that we can get people to look at the survey and, and take that survey. We need it because we need as many, much output as we can get so that there are some problems in town. There are some intersections and some roads that need to be worked on and we need to let, let that be put into study.
Right, thank you. Thank you all for your time. I really appreciate it.
The next thing we have is comments by me, and I don't have anything right now that I need to discuss. So I'm going to turn it over to Leanna.
I don't have any business for council, but I did want to just give you a few updates. The new sign at, coming into town over by Country Valley Place should be completed in a couple of weeks. If you haven't ridden by there, you should, it looks really good. The RC two rural community, rural, my mind's going blank. Rural Community Capacity Building Grant that we were approved for. There was a a public statement put out. I don't know if you all saw it or not, but anyway, Wendy and I attended in May. June's class was virtual and will be virtual this week and July we'll be back again. But we've gotten some really good information so far. And we also met with our representative from the Department of Commerce about some of the grants that'll be coming up and being a graduate of this program will give us points for those grants. Also, the Citizens Academy that you've just approved in the budget should be starting the, the middle part of October. And the first session will be a six-week session, so it'll be over before Thanksgiving. And then we'll do another one in the spring. It will either be six weeks or we may extend it to eight weeks depending on how the first one goes. And in July, the strategic plan that we've been working on with the Council of Governments, we got a draft copy of that Friday afternoon late. And Mayor Burden and I talked about whether or not you wanted to add that to tonight's agenda, but we had a lot of other stuff going on, so that will be in July. And some of the stuff that you talked about at the last meeting with them on that strategic plan that you have given staff a directive to discuss with council about some of those deadlines. The staff retreat for that is going to be on July twenty-second. And we will also be presenting to you a resolution for support of the RDU funding that Mr. McGowan talked about a month or two ago. That came out to us Friday afternoon as well from the COG. Just some updates for you.
One question for you, that's on the Citizens Academy that runs for six weeks. How often do they meet?
Once a week.
Once a week for how long?
For six weeks.
No, once a week for two hours, three hours, an hour?
Probably be like an hour and a half, two hours, depending on what the, depending on how the agendas go for each one. If we're, if we're going to go visit any sites or whatever, may run a little bit longer. But we, we should hopefully have a full draft agenda in a month or two when registration goes out.
Okay, how are we putting out the information for registration?
Facebook and our website, and then we'll have some information at Town Hall. If somebody wants to come by and pick it up or fill out a paper application.
Thank you.
And I think it would be good if, if council would, if we knew, know citizens that need to be included or if we ourselves wanted to be in and on, to, to be in part of that. The updates that you were talking about for the strategic plan, the staff recommendations, you're going to give us a detail of that, of what timeline?
Yes, so when it, when it's presented to you for approval in July, you'll get the, the complete strategic plan. And then there will also be a timeline that goes along with that for the items in the strategic plan. Say you've got a goal to finish this by December twenty-two and this by May twenty-three and.
You will have that detailed out, so we'll know exactly what is expected.
Yes. Elena from the, from TJ COG will be here to present that to you. Lee has got conflicts for the next three months on our council meeting nights, but Elena has been working with him through all of it.
She was the one that was at the.
Yes. That's all I have.
Okay. Sherry? Financial report?
Hello, council. In the package you should see and read your financial statements for May. If you have any questions in reference to that.
I do, Sherry. A couple of quick questions, page one of one. I'm just looking at some of the percentages regarding the variance, variances over and under. And I'm, I'm just curious, for example, page one of one, item three eleven, travel expense. It's over by four hundred and one percent. Is there? Did we have a lot of people traveling this, this past month or what?
What page are you?
Page one of one. Yeah, governing board.
Now, are you talking about the amendment or the financial report itself?
The report itself, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, down eight items.
Oh, okay, I got you.
Travel expense, four hundred and one percent.
In reference to that, travel expense contains hotel stays, food and mileage. And the mayor went to a conference, league conference in Wilmington and she overstated not, so that was the hotel and expense for that.
Okay. The, the next one, go to page, it's also page one of one. It's expenditures for administration. It's the same thing, travel is up on that one, a hundred and forty-three.
Um, yes, Leanna has been, and also I will tell you since the, since. Yes, Leanna has been, and also I will tell you since the, since this has posted, there have always, there has since been travel expenses added to this. We're trying to wrap things up for June as well. And Leanna has taken on extra expenses as far as that new grant program she was talking about going to the mountains and staying. So there was extra mileage there and things of this nature.
So, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, since it's both, it's both travel oriented.
Yes.
Have we made arrangements or adjustments for our new budget to cover some increase in travel like this?
Yes, most definitely.
Okay.
And we also noticed that in my budget amendment, I have included an increase on these certain line items to get these out of a deficit.
Okay, good. Okay, the next one is, it's on the police side. It's the next page, one of two salaries for the part time folks are up. They're over 100 by 127%. Will that, I understand we need part timers and for whatever reason, and it does build up. Will, do you think that'll be addressed when we get the new full timers in? Chief?
That will be a chief question.
Yeah, I anticipate we have, you know, two more full timers. So we have less need for the part timers.
Okay, that's what I.
A lot of them are filling their needs for, you know, the staff that we have right now.
Okay. Thank you. Supplies also up 285% is what I'm saying with some of these things. Should we not put these in the?
The supply line items, you'll have to realize that the board did vote on this. And these were items that the chief had ordered such as, we had gotten new body cams and we had gotten tasers and things of this nature that you guys had voted on. So that is part of that.
Okay, that's what I'm, I just want to, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, the next item.
The money for the RC2 that Wendy and I both are going to, that is reimbursable. So even though it has to come out of our budget line, that grant reimburses the town for our expenses on mileage. And if it's a two day program, we have to stay overnight. It reimburses us for that as well.
Yes, but we just haven't received any of the revenue yet.
Right.
And it has to be taken out of the line item that it's attached to. So, yeah, yeah.
Also, the next item that you have in your package is the budget ordinance. The second one for this year that should, which, I mean, at the end of the year, you're always playing a guessing game. Whenever you're doing budget amendments, you never know if you've increased one another or if you've decreased it one another. So I tried to include everything on here that I saw that needed to be included. And so this is, will need to be a motion carried forth to amend the budget.
Sherry, this does include almost everything for the year. I mean, there shouldn't be another amendment.
No, this is it for the year.
Right.
Yeah, and, you know, and it's almost certain, I mean, every budget does. Like at the end, whenever June 30th gets here, unexpected experiences that occurred and things of that nature, we will have some line items that will go in a deficit. However, and whenever the auditor gets it, he will do his budget, I mean, his general entries on it and things of that nature, and it will work out fine.
Does anyone have any question about this amendment?
No, in fact, I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance to amend and appropriate funds for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021 and ending June 30th, 2022.
Motion was made by David McGowan, seconded by Randy Jernigan to amend the ordinance to budget amendment number two. All in favor? All opposed? Okay.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Sherry. Ms. Wendy? We have her report in front of us. Does anyone have any questions for? A lot of stuff going on, Wendy.
A whole lot. Yep.
Where I'm looking at the subdivisions, what percentage of that is, if you can tell me, is inside the actual city limits as opposed to the ETJ? Do you know, I mean, just?
All of it is inside the city limits. The only part that's not is a part of Johnston Farms, the phase four. But they are going to request annexation before they actually submit plans.
Where is that located, Wendy?
Johnston Farms, back behind Johnston Farms.
That new stuff that they're buying?
The addition, dead end that they've bought up some of Jones Road.
Okay, okay.
Is it, then the new phases in Traylee, are they requesting that they be annexed in the new phases undeveloped?
There's only one phase left of Traylee. They've contacted me as far as they're getting their plans ready to submit, but annexation has never been brought up to me.
Okay.
I have a question. Do, does the code enforcement look at junk vehicles? Have y'all started any of that?
We are going to start that this fall. We have to meet with chief. And we've got to get Mr. DeSablone in on that as well to make sure we're following the right protocol. But because that's another ballgame, that is on the agenda though.
I had a complaint, that's why I was asking someone complained about a junk vehicle in their neighborhood.
Yes, that and unsafe structures will be addressed starting in the fall.
The other item that we have for Wendy is a appointment. Well, we can't appoint them. We need to ask Johnston County to appoint Jay Mouser as member of the planning board because he's in our ETJ.
He took over the term that was vacated and he fell into that spot. And now it's time for his renewal, for his reappointment. And we need a recommendation to send it to county commissioners for them to reappoint him to our.
I move that we, the town council of Wilsons Mills, make the recommendation for him to be appointed to that, to the planning board.
Okay. Motion was made by Councilman Brown to recommend to the county commissioners that Jay Mouser be approved and appointed to the planning board, seconded by Randy Jernigan. All in favor, let it be known by saying I. All opposed? Very good. Events?
We are still having our farmers market every first and third Saturday. Due to lack of vendors being available this past Saturday, we had to cancel this one, but the next one is July 2nd. So we're hoping everybody can come out.
And tell everybody. I think it'd be good if we can get some more participation. Chief? Oh, no, we've got to stand in. Yeah, you got to turn it on.
Have any questions? I'll be happy to answer them.
Anyone have any question? Looks like y'all been busy. Which may be good, it may not be good. Patrick?
Got any questions?
Close, how close are you to the pesticide license?
I just have to do, continue, I have my pesticide license, but I have to do continuing education to be able to keep them.
Okay.
I have to keep them. It's like 10 credit hours I have to keep.
Any more questions? Thank you, Patrick. Thank you for all you do. Does anyone on the council have any comments?
I do. That scared me more than you. Addressing the council here. Last year sometime, it was pointed out to me by a friend of mine who's pretty knowledgeable in the topic of police and fire and EMS communication towers, et cetera. He pointed out that he did a quick survey because he used to do this in Connecticut for like 30 years. And he did a quick drive through of Wilson's Mills proper, and he found that there were approximately five dead zones. One of which is this school right here. So with the help of the chief, and I think Randy, you got involved in this. He was, he was hopefully connected with someone in the county that has to do with the placement of and all the cell towers or the towers for communication. I don't know that anything was done with that. I don't think anything was done as far as, as far as I know. There are probably things always ongoing throughout the county with respect to the towers. And I'm sure there's dead spots throughout the county. So we're not the only ones that are impacted by this. And I understand dead spots and deputies and our officers and fire and EMS, they drive through them all the time and it's to be expected. They know where they are. They know where the dead spots are. My concern is right here at this elementary school. Given what's happened in the past, it's recently in Texas and other places, it's come to my mind that perhaps rather than having a citizen getting in touch with the county and trying to make their feelings known with respect to the dead spots, especially this one right here. I think, well, let me, let me back up. When we have officers come through here, they come through here two or three times a day. They're here when the kids or the children come in in the morning. They're here when the children leave in the afternoon, and they do make walk-throughs during the day, which I'm very, very proud of and very happy. And it gives everybody that warm fuzzy feeling. However, should something happen, the unspeakable happen or start to happen, our officers are in here in a dead zone and they have absolutely no communication outside. My concern is obviously this. So my thought on this would be, and I'd like to have council's input because I think it's a council thing that we need to do. And Randy, I don't know if you have to, you know, recuse yourself on something like this or not. But keep in mind, I would like to see, in my opinion, a letter written by the mayor and mayor, what will written and signed by the mayor and all council members and sent to the appropriate personnel within the county expressing our concern over this dead spot right here. And I think that would carry a little bit more weight than a citizen saying we have a dead spot in the Wilsons Mills Elementary School. I'd like someone to take, someone to do that. We can do that, sign it, and someone in the county will take note and let them respond to us in an official capacity.
I'd like to ask Randy, what does the county do about these dead spots, especially like the schools?
Well, what it is, is construction, your metal buildings, your radio frequencies don't get in and out. Now, they put in a system called a BDA. What does it stand for? I can't tell you.
BDA?
It's called a BDA. What it is, is there's a lot of dead spots. Most schools, you can't get reception in. Tell them you've been a fireman. You can go in some churches, metal churches, whatever, and it blocks the signal. They're putting systems in now that's made mandatory by the county for these big developments. They just put one in the courthouse because if you're standing in the bottom of the courthouse, you can't get out on a radio.
So could one be put into school?
They can at the school's expense.
At the school's expense?
Okay, so this is something that if it's at the school's expense, that's something for the Board of Education, which certainly would send that up to the State Director of Education.
It will be a conglomerate of everything. We would have to get with them.
Do you agree with me, Randy, that rather than me raising my hand or a citizen who is very knowledgeable of this raising their hand, if we were to do an official letter on Wilson's Mills Town Letterhead, signed by all of us, and I'd like all of us to agree and the mayor, and let's see what kind of a response we'll get. And let's see if we can get one of these BDAs here. Again, I don't want anything to happen on my watch or any future watch.
That's something we'll have to get with the Fire Marshal's Office and the chiefs will have to get together, the police chiefs and your EMS division. That's, everybody coming together as one.
But by doing this, it certainly, you know, raises a flag for someone to respond to it and look at it. Okay, let's do this. Would you all agree that if we have this letter next council meeting?
We can all sign.
We can sign it and send it on from there? Good, thank you all very much.
Okay.
Thank you all. I appreciate it. We'll make sure that's done.
I think that.
You don't know what a BDA costs? Know what it costs? I understand that. Do we know what it costs generally? Okay. Is anyone else looking at this in the county that you're aware of?
They're actually putting in all new construction buildings. It's mandatory if, I think it's mandatory to be put in all buildings now over a certain square footage for high occupancy buildings.
Is this a, an ordinance, a county ordinance?
I'm not for sure if it's been in the ordinance or not. But I know the Fire Marshal's Office does go around checking all the new.
Okay. Chief, Chief Williams has indicated that he's going to give me the names and addresses and titles of the persons that should go to. Let me ask you this. Do you think it should go to the county commissioners and let it trickle down that way? I always believe things should trickle down. People pay more attention to them.
Big good start. Big good start to see where exactly we, to see where we need to start at, to see what can be done.
I would, I would just say that I think it's an excellent idea. And, and the Police Chiefs Association probably carries, carries some pretty good weight in the county. But the Firemen's Association carries a whole lot of weight in the county. And they have for years. And the chiefs, Fire Chiefs Association. If I had to say, probably fire and EMS probably, or fires in that situation, probably more than even law enforcement trying to talk in and out in my years of service. But that would be somebody who would probably help get attention.
Do you think Rick Hester and I, the county, the county manager are very good friends? We go to lunch on occasion. We promise not to talk business. But you think if I asked him where this should go? I mean, we indicate to him our resolve to do this and not be talked out of it and ask Rick where he thinks it should go? Would it go to the commissioners with the chiefs and the Fire Department Association undersigning it or just getting a copy of it? Would you agree? I should talk to Rick Hester perhaps? Anybody? Leanna?
It wouldn't hurt.
Rick owes me a lunch. Thank you all. We'll have that letter for you next time.
Anyone else have any comment? If not, I opened the second public forum at 7:40. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. State your name, your address. Limit your comments to three minutes and sign in. No one wishing to come forward. I closed the public forum at 7:41. Do I hear a motion that we adjourn? Councilman McGowan made the motion to adjourn and Councilman Jernigan seconded it. All in favor, let it be known by saying I. Y'all go home.